Need a jigger.
Okay, ready. Good morning. I now call to order the June 22nd, 2022 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick; County Council, Nate Boderman. Roll call: Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning on this sunny day, finally, right? We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, what's the first item?
First item today, Chair, is reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance, and it is: Adoption of a Previously Approved Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments, ZDO 282, Phase II, Land Use Housing Strategies Project: Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments. Nate Boderman, County Council, will present. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, everyone. This morning, we are recommending adoption of an ordinance to implement the previously approved ZDO 282 proposal, which is, as you know, a package of legislative amendments to the county's comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance, generally involving those changes that are needed to comply with House Bill 2001, which was a 2019 Oregon Legislature mandate, which really mandates jurisdictions, including Clackamas County, to build middle housing, which includes duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhomes, and to build those in the urban areas, zone for single-family detached housing. So the Planning Commission held public hearings on March 28th this year and voted to recommend approval of the amendment package at that time. This board then held public hearings on both April 27th and May 11th and voted 3 to 2 to approve the ZDO 282 proposal as recommended by the Planning Commission, but also to include some clarifying amendments for provisions related to condominiums. So staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision made just about three weeks ago now, and staff's recommendation that you approve the ordinance materials, which served to implement the board's prior approval, which was made back on May 11th. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Nate. Do Commissioners have any comments or clarifying questions? Commissioner Savis?
Sure. I'll just make a few comments. I just want to just express my concern over this has been along the lines of that it is not really takes into account all the planning elements that we have all got accustomed to, and so to speak bypasses a lot of those, takes a lot of our local control away. I also have an issue with the FIO aspects, the fee in lieu of, for sidewalk improvements, the off-street parking provisions, and areas where pedestrians today are already forced to be in the line of traffic in the street in order to get around a car or anything, to walk in the street. They can't walk, and they're not going to walk in the mud, or where a tree is, or where a tree's fallen, or there's debris, or vegetation built up. So it's not common. I do walk, you know, many areas of the county, most especially close to Ry Liv. We were scheduled, actually talked about, and agreed to at the first hearing, I believe, at the first discussion on this, to go for a walk and see some of these things firsthand. We didn't do that. Not a big deal. But with the lack of transit in the area and not really the full consideration that these things are designed, these planning, this HB 2001 is somewhat designed for increasing or high-density environments and not taking into consideration, again, the compromises to safety for the pedestrian, safety to disabled population that is going to be forced to be in the street, in the line of traffic, to get around, to go to anywhere in their neighborhood. And I won't go on very much longer, but I just can't support it as is, and I really think that we need to, again, take legislative action or lobbying efforts to bring in and talk about the exceptions. I also talked about stormwater. Stormwater challenges, we seem to be bypassing, or this legislation seems to be bypassing a lot of the critical infrastructure that is really needed, and I don't think we exercised, or this bill allows us to exercise, all those options, or exceptions.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Schull, you're up.
Yes. If we don't adopt this zoning change, we'd be subject to the requirements from the state. And so this gives us at least a little bit of wiggle room, okay, for Clackamas County. So by not adopting this today, we basically are going to have to live with the state requirement. Correct?
That is correct. There's a model code that would be imposed on the county to apply at that point. What this allows us to do is to impose our own set of regulations, which you've done, or which you've approved.
And this needs to be adopted by what date?
June 30th.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this the last time we'll hear this, if this passes today?
Correct. And so the ordinance would pass, and you'd have a delayed effective date, but it would be before June 30.
I see no other Commissioners in the queue, but I will now entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance, ZDO 282, by title only.
Second. Commissioner Schull has moved we read ordinance by title only, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Savis?
No.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. Clerk, please read the ordinance, ZDO-282, by title only.
Ordinance number ZDO-282, an ordinance amending Chapters 4, 6, and 10, and Appendix B of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan, amending Sections 202, 315, 316, 317, 510, 824, 839, 1001, 1002, 1005, 1006, 1007, 1009, 1010, 1012, 1015, 1021, 1102, 1105, and 1307 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, and adding a new section 845 to the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Thank you very much. I will now entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the previously approved Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance Amendments in ordinance, ZDO 282, as previously approved at the May 11th, 2022 land use hearing.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner Schull to approve the Comprehensive Plan and ZDO 282, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. Thank you, Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next is a board discussion item, which is: Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon to Provide a Small Business Assistance Grant Program on behalf of Clackamas County in Support of the Local Business Community Recovering from the Economic Impacts of the COVID-19 Pandemic. The grant value is $3 million. Funding is through ARPA funds. No county general funds are involved. Sarah Ekman, Interim Director of Business and Community Services, and Nancy Bush, County Operating Officer, will present. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. Sarah, why don't you go ahead and get started? Okay. Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners, and Administrator Schmidt. Yes, so we provided a slight overview of this on Tuesday and are back to discuss this with you today. There are dollars that you allocated, ARPA dollars, to support the business community. And as we've been working through how to do that, we've engaged with Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon to develop a subrecipient grant agreement. We know that businesses are focused on recovery, and they're still struggling. In coordination with our partners, we have a lot of feedback coming in from the business community that they still need funding. Many didn't apply in earlier rounds. They're suffering from lack of employees and supply chain pressures. They've depleted their savings. Some report not drawing income for themselves while they pay employees. And in one of our partner surveys, only one out of 80 businesses surveyed reported being in good shape. So we know that the need is still out there, and we've designed a program with MISO that was the outcome of a Notice of Funding Opportunity that we posted on the county's grants website in accordance with our grant guidelines that the county follows as a whole. MISO was one of two proposers. The second proposer was found not fully responsive to the Notice of Funding Opportunity, and MISO provided a very comprehensive response to the package. And so we did move forward with engaging with them to develop the subrecipient grant agreement before you today, which is a program that will distribute approximately 2.6 of that 3 million in grants to the businesses. MISO is planning to do that through $10,000 grant awards. And eligibility criteria has been designed in accordance with ARPA guidance to be the lowest-risk, simplest, and straightforward way we can facilitate this process, because we did ask MISO to distribute dollars within 60 days of the date of execution of the agreement. So applicants would be eligible if they meet one or both of two criteria, which is that they're in qualified census tracts in the county, and there's three of them, or their business is in the travel, tourism, and hospitality industry. They also need to be located in Clackamas County. They need to be a registered business. They can be also a registered nonprofit, as we know that nonprofits often are operating within the tourism and hospitality realm. And then they would be considered eligible for the process, eligible applicants. And then we have some prioritization criteria built into the agreement that would be utilized, assuming there's a high chance of being oversubscribed for the opportunity. So that would be whether or not applicants had previously received any assistance, both federal, local, any county assistance, or no assistance. And that's how the prioritization would take place. As part of the subrecipient grant agreement, MISO will provide technical assistance to all applicants. And this is an outcome of prior processes with MISO where they would provide materials in non-English languages based on need. They will also assist applicants with navigating the online application to ensure that they can all be successful in navigating that. The other major requirement of the agreement is that they conduct a very robust outreach strategy, which is to ensure that the information receives all of the eligible applicants, and also those who have historically been disadvantaged in the business community. MISO has a great track record of this and is well-engaged in those areas in the county, and so we're confident that their outreach strategy would then set the stage for a very robust application pool. So that's the nuts and bolts of the agreement before you today.
Thank you, Sarah. Do any of the Commissioners have questions about this?
Clarification, Sarah. We talked about this on Tuesday, and you just brought up something nuanced, maybe, that I didn't pick up on on Tuesday. So on Tuesday, you mentioned that the ARPA qualifications or the distribution was to, essentially, I forgot what the terminology was. I got it here in my iPad. But it was basically the marginalized communities, I can't remember exactly what the language was. Does that apply only to the, within the qualified census tracts, or to tourism? Both?
It applies to both. So the federal government, through the ARPA guidance, has already found that businesses in qualified census tracts, as well as in the travel, tourism, and hospitality industries, are disproportionately impacted. And so it's essentially, they've already vetted those categories, if you will, and deemed them eligible, so it greatly reduces the burden of proof of impact, which is why the program is designed that way. There's less documentation required when applicants apply for the funds, because they fall within those categories. And that's why we knew that would be the lowest-risk way to proceed with the program and also allow us to facilitate it in the quickest fashion possible.
Okay. And then, as I recall, the BRCs, the Business Recovery Centers, distributed, helped distribute out the CARES Act funding, and then, but was not prepared or interested in pursuing this because of the complexity of the ARPA, right? Just the administration of it?
That is true.
Okay. And so it's also my understanding from talking to the chambers and some of the business members that in that process, there was not enough resources to really get to the need, right? It was oversubscribed. And so, in essence, some of the minority-owned businesses really didn't receive a share or any share, right, of that original CARES Act funding, as I understand it. So is the criteria, as you mentioned, the three, those who receive funding, those who did not receive it? So those who didn't receive funding are at the top, at the top of the order, right?
They are. So if there's been no prior funding for our program, they would be the top. The lowest priority would be if they'd had prior funding from us. The chambers received CARES dollars from us for the Business Recovery Centers, but we did use MISO to distribute grants using the CARES dollars, and the chambers didn't function in that capacity. They did decline the opportunity to engage on our ARPA dollars, but they do have state ARPA dollars. And so since our engagement and conversation with them, they have pursued developing a program utilizing ARPA dollars they received through state legislative allocations. And so they are very close to being able to open their application period as well. And they have some additional allotments in there, if you will. For example, they are allowing proof of lost revenue as part of an application. And so there's going to be a rather robust pool of grants available in the near future. And we're hoping, because we did hear from the chambers through the BRCs, that there were businesses they found didn't, you know, they kind of fell through the cracks. And so they're working hard to make sure that those businesses are aware of the opportunities, as well as then MISO would be working on our behalf to ensure those businesses are aware.
Okay. So is it fair to characterize that what we're doing here today is helping fulfill what we initially set out to do with getting the business recovery aspect, you know, not the BRCs per se, by using the words "business recovery," and especially to those who did not receive the benefit in the first place? So it's more of a fair, another opportunity for a fair distribution. Is that a fair characterization?
We're prioritizing those who didn't receive prior funds. If they did, they could still potentially do that, but they would be lower, a lower tier in terms of, depending on how many applications we have, you know, they could potentially receive funding if we don't have a huge pool. But if we do have a large pool, say there were enough applications to deplete the funding, and all of those folks had never received awards before, they would be the ones who would get it. And we knew when we did this, it would be more in a recovery support role, rather than in the midst of the pandemic support role, because prior grant awards were based on expenses incurred by businesses, and now we know we're helping them regain some of their footing.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Commissioners who want to speak on this. Commissioner Schull, you're up next.
Yes. This 3 million, if 2.6 million went to businesses in $10,000 grants, that means about $400,000 bucks would be used for overhead by Micro Enterprise Services. We've been at this for quite a little while, since this ARPA dollars were made available to Business and Community Services. At this time, we have many pressing needs for ARPA dollars. I personally would like to see this $3 million come back to the general ARPA fund, along with any other ARPA dollars at BCS that have yet to be distributed, and any ARPA dollars that might be under the county administration tab of the budget, also returned to the ARPA fund for reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schull. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah. Hey, Sarah, I want to say thank you for answering all my questions. And I don't know if they got distributed. I know some got distributed to the entire commission, but I asked a couple more this morning before today's meeting. So I just want to summarize what I asked, and just sort of what you said, and then my question, just to keep my fellow Commissioners in the lane of what I was thinking. One of the things that we talked about on Tuesday was the idea of lost revenue potentially being a criteria. And I thought that was important, just to make sure that we funnel dollars to the most, those businesses most in need. But Sarah went through the process that they've gone through in working with getting the applications in order to distribute the dollars, and having the two applicants, and then moving forward. And the way that it's structured with the first tier of businesses being eligible are those that do have not received any assistance, is a pretty good criteria in my mind, after hearing all of the explanations in assuring that the dollars would go to those businesses that are most in need. So that is a little summary. If there are other, I've meddied the water and created more questions. Sarah's here, we can ask her. But my question is, at the end of that email this morning, you had said that there are other programs for businesses to apply to for, that look at lost revenue. And I am just interested, and you don't have to give a full, but just a little summary of what some of those programs might be.
The one that I'm aware of for certain is through the Business Recovery Centers. In talking with one of their representatives, they said that there will be, you know, allotment for that. And exactly how they have structured that, I'm not sure. We could follow up. But they did say that there was, lost revenue was a component in their program for applicants to be able to apply for funding based on having lost revenue.
Okay. And that, just a follow-up, that has not been rolled out yet, or is it being rolled out through the Business Recovery Centers?
It's going through the Business Recovery Centers, and we could, I can get an update from them and email that to you.
So it's currently in process?
It is. And I understand, so there's several Business Recovery Centers that have funding. They're all separate ARPA funding agreements. They could speak to it best, but they're working on their programs collectively, but also having to do some of their work individually. And so we could get an overview of where they're at. From what I've heard, there are some of those grant programs that are just about ready to be opened up, but I would have to get specifics from them.
Yeah. I mean, I would be very interested. You know, small businesses are the foundation that really drives our economy, and so many businesses really struggled for a variety of reasons at the onset of COVID and all the shutdowns. And then now, at the point of recovery, it's really hard for many businesses. So I'm in support of us using these dollars in this way, because it could be a bridge for businesses to continue to sustain. And I just think that's really important, that we do that. That's what these dollars are there for, to deal with the effects of COVID.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Two more Commissioners, and then Gary Schmidt. Martha, Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah. So I want to investigate the Business Recovery Centers, because one of the reasons I really felt good with them is they're local. They're directly connected to our community, and it sounds as if, to me, they're already doing the job. So what's been going through my head, it's similar to what Commissioner Schull said, MISO has a high overhead, what, $400,000?
Four hundred thousand.
Pardon me?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand. That's awfully high. And if we already have Business Recovery Centers that are locally based throughout our county, through the, it seems to me that's a better way for, to go about this recovery. I know we've worked with MISO in the past, but that's money we could be, we could be using in other areas. And I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Schull on this, that, you know, can we reevaluate what we're going to do with these dollars at this time, since it sounds as if we're replicating something that's already in process? And I agree with Commissioner Fisher that I'd like to get a report from the Business Recovery Centers, because money's scarce. And I don't usually come from a scarcity mentality, but this is only one-time funding, and I would rather kind of do this kind of work through our local community, you know, chambers, than another entity at this point with such high overhead. And so I'm at the point where I'm rethinking this, okay? So.
Thank you.
Could I provide a little bit of clarification?
Yeah.
Just to give a little bit of that, and I'd be happy to get an update from the BRCs. I know that the amounts received by the BRCs are not extensive in the sense that they have to use those dollars to carry them through the next couple of years. And so they're maximizing what they can for grants, and we'll find out exactly what that is. They're also needing to use those to continue other vital functions. The amounts included in the MISO agreement, so the ARPA guidance provides for a 10% indirect cost recovery, and that's where the calculation, I believe it's 273,000, came from. And then the contracts and technical assistance is an up-to amount, and so we've allowed space in there, depending on what the needs are. But they won't necessarily, if the need doesn't reach 120,000, that will be something that would be billed on an as-you-spaced. So I just wanted to provide that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and then I'm going to call on Gary Schmidt. How long has this money been sitting here?
I believe the decision to allocate it was July of '21. So we're at about 11 months.
So it's been very slow. And I kind of agree with the Business Recovery Center model. I also have another looming thought in my mind. So we're giving to businesses who are in need, or maybe, obviously, they're going to show a need. If their doors are still open, it's probably a miraculous feat, based on their own business acumen and ability to be resilient. But what if something happens, we pass out this $3 million, and then a recession comes along and wipes them out? Because a lot of these businesses, especially in the hospitality, restaurant areas, have been so adversely hit. And with the rising price of gasoline, which is affecting the cost of our food, the food supply issue, you know, I'm concerned we're going to dole out this money to these businesses, which, hey, I'm a business owner. I get it. My business, right now, I'm a hazelnut farmer. Our equipment runs on diesel. At $6 a gallon, we're not going to make any money. I have not applied, nor will I will, it probably isn't even a criteria. You know, the cost of fertilizer has quadrupled. You know, the cost of fertilizer has quadrupled. So I am not sure if this Band-Aid solution is going to really help into the future that much. And I am real concerned about, maybe we should just bring this money back in and reallocate it towards sticks and bricks, and some of our, some of our projects that commissioners can decide on later. I'm more in tune to think of that. The money has been sitting there. So how many businesses have been knocking down our doors for this money? Do we have any idea?
I have inquiries from about a dozen businesses. When we posted the notice of funding opportunity for where MISO applied, there was some perception from business owners that that was their application time period. And so those who saw that and wanted to inquire have inquired.
And then we, this morning, about, a little bit after eight, we have an email from you with two additional addendums, and I haven't had time to read it. We just got that before, because even though we meet at 10, as Chair at 8:00 AM, I'm busy doing other businesses, so it's hard for me to read last-minute information, which may apply or may not apply. Gary, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, so commissioners, you did authorize the distribution of these funds a year ago, July 2021, for the nonprofits as well, and it has not been distributed yet. I take responsibility for that. It's not purposeful. Staff was not just sitting on this, twiddling our thumbs, but it didn't get out, and it should have. And probably the need for businesses was greater a year ago than it is today. Still a need, but maybe not as great. And the county has distributed other funds to businesses through the last year and a half. CARES Act dollars, some of our economic development dollars, which I believe you said 8 million, is that correct?
Eight million dollars in grants to businesses.
Has already been distributed to businesses in Clackamas County. So you, you have done your part, commissioners. But I do want to own that. I apologize, it was not purposeful. But yes, we, staff did not deliver on this as we should have. So as you make, keep that in mind as you make your decision. As far as the nonprofit funds, I think it's, is it 4 million or 6 million the board authorized, Nancy?
So they, you authorized 6 million. 2 million was for basic needs, which is actually going out the door now. And then there's 4 million for capacity building, which is being planned to be spent over two to three years, because it's capacity building, so it won't go out the door. It's not similar to what the businesses were doing.
Okay. So I would suggest you can have that nonprofit discussion next week at issues, if you wish. Today, the only question is if you want to spend this Business Recovery dollars, ARPA dollars for businesses or not on this contract. But thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, so I'm listening intently and also kind of respond a little bit to my colleague, Commissioner Schrader. So I have spoken to, even after this money was awarded, the chambers, many times, and I said, why is it that you are, the BRCs are not being utilized for this money? And they said, because the, the administration is so difficult for it, that they, they did not feel qualified, and they stepped away. So though we might, as, from a distance, not, we might think the BRC is the model, when the BRCs are telling us, we're not the model, and we can't do this. MISO really is our last gap, or last, last stop in order to put these dollars out. So that, that model, that model's proven that it's not going to work. So, but the need's still out there. I want to just say that, as a business owner, and I think there's a difference, frankly, in my experience, both, because I've been on both sides, you know, having brick-and-mortar business and not, and having a business that was not brick-and-mortar, or both, multiple. And that is, when you have employees in a brick-and-mortar operation, it's far more difficult to make payroll. You have a lot of fixed expenses, and when you have a lull in your revenue stream because of, because I didn't experience a pandemic, honestly, in my time. But what I am hearing, and even right now, this, daily, we're hearing that businesses are having a hard time hiring people, and they have to pay above scale to get people in the door. So they might have, might have been $15 an hour to hire someone to work in a restaurant or work wherever it may be, and now they're paying people 25 to 50%, trying to encourage them in there. So their cost of running their, trying to keep their business afloat today is far more difficult than it was prior to the pandemic. So I heard all the arguments. I, I just don't think it's, I just strongly support this, and I encourage you all to be considerate of how difficult it is for these folks to keep their, you know, their, their really, their life's investment alive, to keep them going.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I appreciate this conversation. We do have a lot of competing needs, and especially when it comes to bricks and sticks with rising costs and things that we should be mindful of in moving forward. I, I don't know, what is our timeline on this? Do we have to make a decision today? I would really like to understand the Business Recovery Centers. I just did an email over to Liz Hartman, who's the chamber leader over in Lake Oswego, to just say, hey, what's going on, and what do you? But I don't feel like I have that piece of the puzzle in my mind. I would like to know that. Do we have to make this decision today? Can we get that information and then revisit it?
We can get that information. I can work with them to come speak with you next week, if that's scheduleable. We also, the, the urgency is just in the fact that we've required MISO to distribute funds within 60 days of execution of the agreement. And so delaying it, that's the impact if, you know, it'll just give a little bit more time before the program rolls out, which I think, you know, we're fine on that.
But we could get a little bit more information, I mean, if we take a week to get it, that would be good.
Two other commissioners in the queue, are you finished, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, we have tens of thousands of businesses in Clackamas County. Every business has suffered hardship in the last couple of years. Virtually no one out there who runs a business says they have too much money. If we were to approve this grant for $3 million, that means that, and it went out in $10,000 grants. That means out of the tens of thousands of businesses in Clackamas County, 260 businesses would receive a $10,000 grant. And again, I, I believe that at this point in time, these dollars would be better spent if we were to bring them back to the general ARPA fund and take a look at our overall pressing needs in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I'm pretty conflicted over this, because I've always been a small business champion as well, having run a farm, and then, you know, a veterinary clinic. I was not directly involved in that, but it was a clinic that basically employed 11 people, and we certainly were in the position at times, and we did not bring home a paycheck from that clinic, because we had to pay, you know, the staff had to be paid first. So I, I get how that goes with small businesses. But it seems as if we've already put quite a bit of money, and I'm still concerned about the overhead. And I'm going to make a motion that we return these dollars back to the general ARPA fund for reevaluation at a later date. So it doesn't mean that we're saying no, but I do think, now, we've only got one tranche left, is that correct, Gary? So how much would it be, 43 million that we would have on hand?
We have approximately 40 million yet to come.
Right.
We've not received yet.
And what have we got left now, Nancy?
In the first tranche, I think, I think we have around eight, five, no, I'm sorry, around 6 million. It's around 6 million.
Okay, so this would be, give us an additional 6 million.
Four.
Additional 4 million if we were to not move ahead with this at this time, and take a second look at it. Anyway, I made a motion, I don't know if we have a second or not.
Seconded.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Schrader to return the ARPA dollars back to the ARPA fund for reevaluation at a later date. It has been seconded by Commissioner Shaw. I've been a business owner my whole life. I too am equally as conflicted. However, I remember something Commissioner Schrader has said, the National Association of Counties are, were really adamant about how these ARPA dollars should be spent. Basically, if we spend it on what you mentioned, and on program development for the nonprofits, and that money goes away, does our program still stay afloat? I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned, too, that this is a temporary fix for their employees. Yes, I understand the labor shortage. However, I am conflicted in that I don't think $10,000 per business is enough to prop up the labor shortage and get people back to doing what, I just don't, I just can't see that. I think it's going to be, it's a temporary fix going forward, but I am too conflicted. You know, I've had businesses, my husband and I, look, we've had businesses for as long as, for decades and decades, going back 40 years. And my parents were also self-employed people, so I come out of that realm. I understand deeply. But I also understand there are projects here at Clackamas County that have been on the books for years and years and years, that need to be completed and need to go forward, that it will indeed serve some businesses, that will indeed serve the general population for the, for the greatest good of Clackamas County. And that's really where I think a majority of these ARPA dollars should be focused on that. We have two commissioners who want to speak, and I'm not sure who is first. Commissioner Fisher, were you first?
I don't know.
I don't either. Go ahead.
So I'm going to vote no on this motion, simply because I would just like one week. And I don't know if my colleagues would allow that, but I have heard from many businesses that are currently now really struggling to stay afloat, and this can, this could really assist. And so I will be a no. I don't see why we can't wait one week. I would like us to wait one week. I think that Sarah could work with our Business Recovery Center, see what else is out there. If there are other funds that fill this gap, I'm going to be enthusiastic, yes, let's please reallocate the money to other things. I would like this to be a full commission effort. I think that is good for trusting government and a good message to our constituents, but without being granted one more week, I'm going to be a no on this today.
I appreciate you wanting to do that. However, I'm not sure what a week is going to do for us. I suspect the information coming forth is not really going to change minds on this commission, on this. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, well, Chair, let me ask a question first. Sarah, Nancy, Commissioner Smith brought up a point that maybe this money is not enough to help businesses. Are we limited to 3 million? Or is, are we limited to a $10,000 grant? I don't know what Commissioner Smith was alluding to, but maybe if she feels it needs to be more, is that a possibility? Are we limited in the ARPA distribution?
It's a possibility. When we asked for proposals on how to distribute the funds, the proposers were given the discretion to propose amounts in a distribution plan. We heard that sizable amounts are definitely more helpful. One of the, I think the median amount that was shared in some data I heard yesterday was $12,000 was that mark, so 10 was close. But we have heard that a lot of businesses do, you know, feel that a more substantial award would be, you know, give them more traction. However, it's, it's that balance, I think, where MISO is trying to be at, of providing a substantial enough award, yet being able to distribute to as many as possible. So we're not limited, and we could certainly work with them to increase award amounts. It would just, in turn, reduce our quantity.
Okay, thank you. I, I concur with Commissioner Fisher's request of maybe defer this to a week if there's, if this is in jeopardy. But I want to state this, is that, you know, small business is the backbone of this country. It's the backbone of our state. It's the backbone of our county. Most businesses are small, have few employees, and it's very tough making payroll. And these are very challenging times, so I, I think it's worthwhile for everything we stand for, if this is in jeopardy today, to bring it back next week.
Commissioner Savas, I agree with you in your statements about small businesses being the backbone, and they are in jeopardy. But many of these small businesses have received funds throughout. I just think we need to reevaluate. You know, times change, and as we move forward, we weren't in this situation. And I'm going to call for a vote. I think we've, we've all said what we need to say, and restating a previous position isn't going to change anything here today. So I want to thank you. I am so wholly invested in small business, myself, but I think we need to look at what's happening in our county from maybe a more broader view on this. So with that in mind.
Chair Smith, I just had a point of clarification, not an additional statement.
Go ahead.
Because you had stated that many of these businesses have received other money, the first criteria, this money would go to businesses that have not received other help.
Correct.
And that's an important clarification, so.
Very important. Thank you, Commissioner. On that, Tony, we're going to call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Savas?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. I want to thank Sarah and Nancy for the good work you've done on this. You've been very good advocates for small businesses. I want to thank the commissioners with our diversified opinions on this and comments. I don't disagree with Commissioner Fisher, and I don't disagree with Commissioner Savas. I just think we need to turn the corner and move forward on this. And maybe we'll bring it back, and, you know, maybe we won't. But for today, this is where it stands. Thank you very much. Gary?
Chair Smith, I have a comment to make. During Tuesday's session, I had declared a potential conflict. Not sure if my husband's theater company was in the census tract, and so I just wanted to clarify. For the record, I checked with Nancy Bush, and that is not in the census tract, so I had absolutely no conflict that I needed to declare today. For the record, thank you, Chair Smith.
Oui-ha. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, just one last comment in regard to ARPA and CARES Act and all this funding. I think there's been some concerns been expressed that, and I want to, I want, we're going to see, I have a spreadsheet, I'll look at it again, but I want to be able to say that we've done our best for all communities, and it's not the government or the county that is, you know, not my term, but that we seem to be hoarding or taking all the money for ourself, these ARPA dollars or CARES Act dollars. So I'd like to somehow make sure that we're doing our best to distribute it out to the community, and it doesn't feel that way.
Well, I would disagree with your statement that the county government is hoarding ARPA dollars. The money we're being spent by the county is going out into our communities. In fact, one of the largest allocations that's being spent is how much, $10,000 or 75, or I mean, 10 million for broadband. And that will serve all the communities out there that don't currently have it. So I think we are doing good things for businesses and getting the money out. It's just a difference in opinion on how that goes. Gary, what's up next?
Next chair is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one, for the Board of County Commissioners, approval of May 19, 2022, business meeting minutes. Item two, for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, approval to apply for an equipment grant through the Oregon Office of Emergency Management for a command center trailer, snowcat, and communications vehicle. Estimated grant value is $825,495. Funding is through the Oregon Office of Emergency Management. No county general funds are involved. Disaster management, item one, approval of intergovernmental grant agreement between Clackamas County and the Oregon Health Authority for the purchase of a refrigerator trailer for storage of human remains. Grant value is $99,865. Funded through reimbursement by Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Business and Community Services, item one, approval of infrastructure and additional shared cost agreement with Clackamas Workforce Partnership and Required One-Stop Partners for the WorkSource Clackamas One-Stop. Contract value is $15,516.48. Funding is through cost allocations to Required One-Stop Partners. No county general funds are involved. Health, Housing, and Human Services, item one, approval of an amendment to a non-federal subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services, extending the duration of the agreement. Agreement value remains at $520,000. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment to a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for dental health expansion, adding an incentive pay model. Anticipated value of the agreement is $400,000. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Columbia Care Services Incorporated for residential treatment services. Agreement value not to exceed $629,858. Funding is through federal pass-through dollars and the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment to a federal subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for rental assistance services, adjusting funding sources and grant duration. Agreement value remains at $1,204,804. Funding is through the Federal Emergency Rental Assistance Funds, Oregon Housing and Community Services, and U.S. Department and Community Services, and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a program agreement with Parenting Now to conduct a program, to conduct a pilot group for Haga de la Familia Unplacer, Making Parenting a Pleasure, Parenting Education. Agreement value is $5,000. Funding is through Parenting Now. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of a subrecipient grant, a subrecipient agreement with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services Incorporated for alcohol and drug recovery housing assistance. Agreement value not to exceed $501,196.30. Funding is through federal pass-through dollars and the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item seven, approval of an amendment to a non-federal subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives for system diversion, homelessness, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services, extending the agreement duration. Agreement value remains at $600,000. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Item eight, approval of an amendment to a non-federal subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for youth-focused system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services, extending the duration agreement. Agreement value remains at $161,000. Funding is through Oregon Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Item nine, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services, providing for educational services to eligible Clackamas County residents on Medicare, Medicaid, fraud, waste, and abuse, modifying the program administrator. Agreement value remains at $10,000. Funding is through the U.S. Administration for Community Living and the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item ten, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for temporary assistance for needy families, pilot partnership project to connect Clackamas County program participants to behavioral health resources. Grant value is $227,300. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item eleven, approval to apply for a grant renewal from the Oregon Department of Human Services to continue the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Training and Education Program. Grant value is $151,825.72. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services with a matching fund amount of $151,825.72, funded through budgeted county general funds and other children, family, and community corrections funds. Item twelve, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for the provision of veterans-directed care services to eligible Clackamas County residents. Agreement value is $313,188. Funding is through the U.S. Administration for Community Living. No county general funds are involved. Item thirteen, approval of a low-income household water assistance program agreement with Clackamas River Water for reimbursement of water and wastewater services on behalf of eligible low-income households. Agreement value not to exceed $840,019, subject to further appropriations. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Item fourteen, approval of an amendment to a provider services agreement with Care Oregon, implementing the shared accountability model. Annual amendment value is $500,000. Annual agreement value increased to $3.5 million. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item fifteen, approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for dental care organization support. Agreement value is $145,002. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item sixteen, approval to apply for federal grant to fund employment service for recently-released incarcerated individuals. Grant value is $900,000. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony, for that. Very nice reading. Does any commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Before I entertain a motion, Gary, I noticed those items were not scrolled, the written form was not scrolled on our screen. Maybe next time we can make sure that happens. I'm sure it's just an oversight, somebody forgot to push a button. Okay, I will now entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero, for the approval of the consent agenda. Thank you very much, commissioners, for this. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Gary?
Next is the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of a permit of use for three acres at the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility by Hewitt Infrastructure West Company for temporary office, trailer, vehicle, and equipment storage and material storage related to the I-205 Bridge Improvements Project. Contract value is $252,000. Funding is through user payments. No county general funds are involved.
Does any commissioner wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the West's consent agenda item.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda for West, has been seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you pass, call the poll, please?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. We are to public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of more consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Do we have any blue cards? I don't believe we have anybody in person to testify today. I will ask the clerk if he has any registrations for Zoom.
Madam Chair, I have two registered for public comment at this time.
Would you please go ahead with that?
I will begin with John Redding. Mr. Redding, you will have three minutes. Mr. Redding, if you were.
Yes, can you hear me now?
I can, sir.
I can, sir. Okay, I've contacted the Commission a couple of times about a motor home in the neighborhood, and I just, it's been removed, and I just wanted to thank the Commission for whatever part they played in getting it removed.
John, thank you for that, and we like hearing from the constituents with situations that we can help with, and I think I can speak for all my commissioners. We appreciated you reaching out to us and letting us know about this situation, and don't be a stranger, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Tony, what's up next?
My next registration is a gentleman by the name of Gerald Murphy. Sir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Morning, Chair Smith. Morning, commissioners. Gerald Murphy, or Murph, from the Rododendron area, Hoodland area. I come to you today to bring a missed opportunity I've been playing with for quite a while. I ran this idea past Commissioners Savas and Commissioner Scholl about a month ago. In my area, there's considerable amount of firearm activity at a target zone that's not really listed as a target zone area, that's next to the Mount Hood RV Park. This particular area is right off East Miller Road, south of Highway 26, and this echoes through the canyon like you would not believe. It sounds like it's a domestic terrorist training facility sometimes with the automatic weapons, the semi-automatics, and the exploding targets. This is something that I've looked upon and called the county on. I've spoken to BLM about this, and nothing can really be done to shut down this area because it's in a rural area, and it's allowed. I have an idea. I think we're missing opportunity. Why can't we create a state-of-the-art shooting range where we could teach gun safety? Right now, we need something like this more than ever. I just got off the phone with my congressman's office. I've spoken to, and who really thought this was an awesome idea. I spoke with a city council member of the City of Sandy. They think this is an awesome idea. They say there's a shortage of shooting areas, and with the amount of firearms coming into our area, we need more recreational sites. What if Clackamas County, State Police, Forest Service, City of Gresham, City of Portland, Multnomah County came together to create this area on federal land and could teach firearm safety, as well as use this facility for their own training? I think this could be something that we really could move with.
Are you finished, Mr. Murphy?
Pardon?
Are you finished, Mr. Murphy?
I'm finished with that idea. I have many ideas, and I'll stop with this one right now.
Well, thank you for that. This is news to me. I am not sure exactly what Clackamas County can do with this situation. I don't know who the ownership is, maybe our other commissioners do, but we do have a state-of-the-art training center in Clackamas County, and it's the Public Safety Training Center in Clackamas off 82nd that is operated by our county sheriff. Other than that, I do understand what you're saying when you live in these rural communities, because I live in a rural community, and I hear a lot of shooting, too. It is not illegal in most cases. I cannot talk to this situation at all, but I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. Tony, anybody else?
Madam Chair, I do not have anyone else preregistered to speak. If there is anyone who would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature.
Well, thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's up next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I always like to share the good things our staff and our programs are doing for the public. Today, I'll share that our Transportation, Department of Transportation and Developments, Transportation Maintenance Division dedicates one full day a year, at least, to safety training. And last month, our Transportation Maintenance Team brushed up on preventing falls when fixing traffic lights or cutting trees, tying down equipment on trailers to follow safety load limits and laws, and the proper operation of forklifts. And our staff did all that, and they passed with flying colors. So thank you to our, our crews, who despite their action-packed days serving the public, they took time to make safety a top priority for them and the public. Next, the Canby Ferry will be back in service this Saturday after a month of maintenance and required inspections. The deck is newly painted, the motor is repaired, and the Coast Guard conducted its regular five-year inspection. We passed with flying colors. So it's time to enjoy a summer ferry ride across the Willamette River on the Canby Ferry. Next, the spring 2022 edition of My Clack Co! magazine hit mailboxes of every resident in Clackamas County this last week. This magazine is produced by our Public and Government Affairs staff, and one community member wrote in about the magazine and said, "I read the new magazine from cover to cover and find it to be excellent. Clear and easy to read, great format, very user-friendly, and it seems to me to be very complete as well. Great overview of what the county is doing. The magazine is a great service to the public." So thank you for this. Thank you for those kind words to our member of the public and our PGA team. That is a fantastic magazine, I think. That's published twice a year. Finally, we'll have a greater debrief later, but I do want to thank all of the county staff who worked in elections the last three weeks. Five hundred and ninety-eight employees. I told you I'd get you two hundred. We got five hundred and ninety-eight employees who gave up their weekends, their Memorial Day holiday, and other days during the last three weeks to help support our elections work, and it's almost finished. I'm very proud of our amazing employees. That's my update for today. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. I, too. I'm so proud of our county employees on this. We'll talk about that later. Now, it's Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savas, you're up first.
Right. Last week, we were very engaged in our budget, and something that has been at top of mind for myself here for a long time has been our history of last five or six, seven years of trying to maintain a sustainable, key words here, structurally sound budget, which really means that in ongoing years ahead, that you have made the adjustments necessary, and you have revenues above expenses. That's basically the, the theory or the definition of being structurally sound. We have not achieved that for several years. And the board set out and prioritized, in our Build Public Trust Through Good Government, and the very first bullet of that says, by July 1st of 2022, just literally twenty-eight days from now, the county's budget will be structurally sound and sustainable and 100% tied to results. Though this budget might be technically sustainable, it's not structurally sound. That gives me pause. I shared that last week with our new Budget Committee members and, and my fellow colleagues on the Commission about that concern. And the big overriding urgency with this has been this longtime push for a new courthouse, which really aggravates that we don't have the funding stream in place to manage that expenditure for thirty approximate years of debt service in the millions of dollars annually. That's, that's my, that's my concern about this overall, and I just want to just express that. Next week, when we talk about the budget, you'll hear more from me about that. I do want to say that in the last, you know, week or so, I've been hearing a misunderstanding or misunderstandings in the community that the Board of Commissioners had planned on a seventeen, seventeen cents GA, or seventeen cents property tax increase to fund the courthouse. That's not true. There was no consideration of that whatsoever. There was no board decision to do that. That's false. That might be a means, perhaps, of funding the courthouse, but that would be a choice only of that of voters, should the Board of County Commissioners put that forth, but there was never any such request, motion, or action to do so. It was also part of this rumor associated that somehow that the current chair overturned that versus the, you know, that, that initiative being set by the past chair. Well, that's not true either, because this has been on a program, and somewhat disturbing to me, has been on a program in which a couple of commissioners have been involved in the courthouse, and this has not really been a mutually, a mutual discussion, as far as I'm concerned, frequently and open and transparent enough amongst all the commissioners. I'm not part of that discussion, have not been part of that, those meetings. I support a new courthouse. My caveat to that is, has got to be, we have to figure out a way to pay for it. We have to figure out a good way to pay for it. And so while I support the courthouse, no one's demonstrated to me of, actually in a viable way, that's affordable, that's practical, that's, that's reasonable to fund the courthouse. So I just, number one, want to make sure that as we go ahead, and we're going to have, I guess, a briefing next week on the courthouse, there's only an hour, as big, as big of a dent as this is going to make for thirty years for the future of this county, we have spent very little time discussing it. I don't think we've had, frankly, a healthy, calm, rational discussion about the courthouse. I've aired that. I think the decisions that were made on May 5th of last year trouble me, and comments that have been coming since then also trouble me. I look forward to discussion about the budget next week. I just want to just say that, you know, it's the future of this county and our ability to support services. to support services, and what's compromised to fund that is what's of great importance to me. So, if that means that we're going to fund the courthouse and not and defund any public safety, you don't have my support.
Commissioner Savas, I'm going to reserve most of my comments for my Commissioner Communication, but I am wholly in objection to your statements as most of them are false. Up next is Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thank you, Chair. I wanted to talk about a few things that has been happening. I'm really kind of delighted to let you know, all of you know, I have been selected by the National Association of Counties to be part of their Economic Mobility Leadership Network, and this is a cohort of county-elected leaders that is focused on helping residents move up the economic ladder. And we do this by really looking across the continuum of all the things that help people be mobile economically, including housing, workforce development, and an overall lack of opportunity. It is a peer-to-peer learning experience during interactive, multi-day site visits to places across the country. NACO sends us out there. It's funded by the Bill and Melissa Gates Foundation. I had to apply to become a member of this committee, and I was delighted just to find out that my application was accepted, and I'm really looking forward to working with my colleagues across the nation on this issue, looking at other things that I can bring home and we can bring home with other counties, what other counties are doing to help our citizens be economically mobile up the ladder. So, delighted to have that happen. The other thing I've been doing, I had an opportunity yesterday to go to the Legacy System, Meridian Park Hospital, where I met with their director, Jonathan Avery, and Gina Cole, who is their public and government relations person. A number of years back, our county identified healthcare as an economic driver, and I've been going back with, Philip Mason Joyner has been joining me, actually, talking to the hospital system, seeing how things are going with COVID, what are their workforce issues that they are trying to cope with at this point. Very interesting discussions, and I'll also be going back to Providence Hospital System here in Oregon City in Milwaukee to talk to them about what's been going on in the healthcare arena post-pandemic. The interesting thing is, is the really, the real issue is a lack of, which we're seeing across all domains, lack of folks, you know, who are nursing, who are really out there. And the most intriguing thing is that both systems, both Kaiser and Legacy, mentioned this notion of the travelers. And what has been happening is nurses have been traveling the country, going to various hospital systems that are now offering them two to three times the pay that their local systems can afford or have been paying. So, they're having a dearth of workers, of nurses, because folks are really traveling across the country, and it's a trend they're very worried about because they're trying to keep their own systems whole and open. And it was fascinating to me that both systems mentioned this workforce issue with that. Other than that, they did talk a little bit about COVID. They said that, you know, that they're still obviously having people in ICUs with it, not to the same level as before. The sentiment seems to be is this is something we're going to have to be dealing with probably from here on out as an endemic problem, but they are feeling less stressed, and at least the medical systems at this point have more of a handle on this post-pandemic, you know, disease that we're now kind of going to have to be dealing with for a while. Also, we brought up the, for both entities, we brought up the notion of childcare. That is something that I asked both Legacy and both Kaiser if they had ever thought about that. And they have peripherally. They're not offering childcare during their hospital systems, but it is a, they did acknowledge it as a need. And again, the difficulty in that particularly men and women with night shifts and families, you know, and how are they going to manage doing that if they don't have someone at home or if they need childcare at, you know, more challenging hours during the day? So, they're aware of the fact that we've been working with our workforce board, we've been working with, I met with Larry Didway the other day, who gave me a number of resources I'd be glad to share with you commissioners on childcare and school, preschool, and after-school programs. Also, to segue into childcare, I actually visited and I wanted to get an idea of what the models were. So, I went to the Child Development Center at Siemens, who actually used to be Mentor Graphics, and they've been, for years and years and years, they have offered childcare, and that was because of Tom Brugere, who was kind of a visionary at the time at Mentor Graphics, decided this was something they could offer their employees. It was probably one of the most remarkable centers I've ever seen. It's beautifully appointed with dedicated people who are working there. They have a business model. Siemens decided, they had the CEO come in and look at it and say, "What's the return on investment? Why do we have this?" And what good? And after seeing what the center is doing there and how it's improving employee productivity, how it's giving parents peace of mind, parents can go back and forth between their job to see how their child's doing. Oftentimes, the children are brought to the cafeteria, can sit with it, and I think the turning point was when the head guy at Siemens sat down, and they brought some of the kids in, and he sat down and had quite the conversation with them. So, he saw the value in this. And for me, as we move forward with this, it's going to be important to look at these models because I believe that the business community will understand that this is an important thing, and how we manage to move ahead with childcare is going to be kind of a fascinating thing. I did have a good conversation with Tim Cook as well. They also have a childcare center on their campus that's run by the Oregon, the Y. So, and Bridget Daisy, on a few occasions, has attended these meetings with me, and we're finding it quite fruitful in terms of, you know, how we're going to move forward with this. So, that's been my busy week. I do want to let you know that on the NACO website, I looked it up, there is a portion that really outlines across the country how other counties are using ARPA dollars. So, colleagues, if you get a chance to do that and take a look at it, it could probably help inform as we move forward with the rest of the dollars that we're going to be getting. So, with that, that's the news.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So, today is June 2nd. Yesterday was June 1st, and that begins the month of Pride. And I'd be happy to support celebrating this month with the Clackamas County employees. Pride is a celebration, but it also serves to commemorate the hard-fought progress that we've made for LGBTQ plus rights. On a personal note, my understanding of the importance of Pride began in the workplace, working for a county government, Multnomah County. It was well over thirty years ago. I hate to, you know, mention my age, but it was the beginning of my career, working in downtown Portland, and I left for lunch, and there were signature gatherers creating a lot of pressure on me to sign a petition that was an effort at that time to remove what was called special rights from an executive order that the governor did. And that really upset me, and I wasn't quite sure what it was at the time that upset me so much, if it was the pressure, if it was the issue, if it was the fact that it was sanctioning discrimination, but it really rattled me. And I went back to the workplace, and I was in my cubicle, and my friend Sandra walked by, and I was just talking to her about it and just sharing how upset I was. And we worked in the field of developmental disabilities, processing that the struggle for me probably stemmed from hitting so many barriers with my daughter, whether that was access to school, or access to buildings, or access to activities that other children were able to participate in. I felt the discrimination from being her mother every day. And Sandra, who I'd worked with, gosh, for about a couple of years, and she, I considered her a friend, she says, "I hear you, and just think what this is like for me as a lesbian." And I had no idea that my friend Sandra was a lesbian. At that time, there were so many people that were forced to live in the closet. That is why Pride and National Coming Out Day are so critically important for so many members of our community that are feeling so isolated and alone, especially our youth. Over the years, I have fought against ballot measures that would place discrimination into our laws. It was Measure Nine, Measure Thirteen, and I will always be a strong voice against discrimination. Within the last few years, I had the immense pleasure of walking a journey with another person that I worked with in the legal field, and it seems to always be like in the workplace where we do our work. My friend Marty, very dear friend, worker-comp lawyer, made the transition to become Marcia. And I walked with Marty becoming Marcia, and I saw that process of the struggle, the struggle, and then the joy of Marcia living her true, authentic life. And it was such a celebration for not only Marcia, but for all of those that knew her and appreciated her. So, unfortunately, we lost Marcia in 2020. She passed away, and because of COVID, we have not been able to celebrate her life appropriately, but I carry her pride in my heart every day. So, I'm going to ask Tony to put up the slide. We are participating, Clackamas County employees, with the Pride Parade on June 19th, 2020, 11:00 a.m. We are, our Clack Co! News out to Employees has a place for people to register. I encourage people, our employees, and others who are interested to participate. And I am proud of our work here in Clackamas County. Pride has been part of Clackamas County for many years, since 2014. Our Employee Resource Group, Queers and Allies, have been operating, working to create awareness and fairness in the workplace, and it just warms my heart. So, on Pride Day Parade, I will be there. I'm hoping my colleagues join me. I am proud to know and love people who identify as LGBTQ plus, and I'm proud to be part of a county that we have two thousand, I had to check this number, 2,367 employees. We are a very significant enterprise and force in our community. I'm proud to be part of an organization that recognizes honors and appreciates each and every employee in Clackamas County. And I have this little, I keep this in my office on my door that people can see as they go by my office. "Clackamas County loves you." We have the rainbow, the heart, and I begin this month with a great deal of heart and celebration and commemoration. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Good morning, Clackamas County. On safety off the streets and the homelessness issue, in May, Clackamas County issued a request for information to solicit responses for safety off the streets, programs, and resources. These are shelters or other types of crisis housing with a primary purpose of providing safe, temporary shelter for people experiencing housing crisis. Please pass the word. See the H3S and the Housing Authority website for more information, and see how you can help be a team member in coming up with these critical shelters. We need to work as a county with businesses, churches, nonprofits, to make this happen. This is step one. Step two is implementing an intake center that can provide care and treatment for mental health issues and drug addiction, to take the pressure off our jails and to offer sustained support and treatment. Step three, we will then be able for our county sheriff and our city police departments to enforce vagrancy laws, to make sure this county is safe, clean, for businesses, for families, and for the people who are currently experiencing homelessness. Please help. On the fire season and preparations, I don't need to remind anybody about the pain and suffering this county experienced in 2020, but now's the time to prepare your property and your family to be ready should another fire occur. See the county disaster management website for details, and make sure your family members are signed up for the Clack Co! Public Alerts Notification System. You can do that online, and you'll get updates on your cell phone, voice over Internet Protocol, or emails. Don't wait till a disaster happens. Please prepare now. On the American Medical Response River Rescue Swimmers Program, AMR provides a public service by providing river rescue swimmers at high rocks in the Clackamas and at Glen Auto Park on the Sandy. They have conducted over 1,000 river rescues and have saved untold lives. Last Friday, Commissioner Savas and I had the privilege of being at Glen Auto Park on the Sandy and observing training of these rescue swimmers, and also the new statue that commemorates their service. Summer's coming. River levels will continue to be high in Clackamas County because we have an over-average snowpack in the mountains, and that water in those rivers will continue to be cold and the current be swift. So, when you're at the river, have fun, but keep an eye on those kids. Don't take your eyes off those kids when they're down there by them having a good time. On the county budget for FY 2023, last week, the Budget Committee approved the budget for the next fiscal year, which begins on 1 July. At the Wednesday night public hearing on the budget, we only had two residents come in and testify about it. So, everyone needs to be familiar with the budget, and you can see it on the county website. On crime, we all need to work together to fight crime in Clackamas County, and you, if you see crime or you have anything to report to our police, you can call the sheriff's office tip line at 503-723-4949. The sheriff's department needs everyone's help in maintaining a safe county. On the vote count, I'd like to thank our county residents who came in and volunteered their time to help out at the clerk's office, and also, I'd like to thank the hundreds of county staff who also filled in, needed critical manpower to make that happen. So, thank you all, and have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. I, too, am so thankful of our county employees and their stellar performance at the elections office. I viewed it many times. I saw people coming out saying, "Hi, Tudy, how you doing?" And many of them seemed to be enjoying it. Many of them volunteered a second and third time, and as time went on, our county employees became the supervisors to help manage the huge amount of volume of ballots that needed to be duplicated, and they worked quite efficiently and quite fast. In fact, the election staff people came to me and said, "I can't believe how fast you people are working. It's wonderful." And so, that was, just really made my heart expand with a lot of gratitude for the wonderful people we have working in Clackamas County. Yes, last week, we passed the budget. Some of the high points in the budget is probably the largest public safety allocations ever in Clackamas County because our residents have told us, our constituents have told us, they think that the public safety is where government should be allocating its resources. We've made a huge amount of progress in allocating patrols to the sheriff deputies and to the district attorney, assistant district attorneys to prosecute crimes. That is very important going forward. Also, there's $32 million in the housing homeless shelter pot to be used forward. This board will be making decisions on that going forward. I look forward to a really good conversation on how those monies are going to be allocated. I look forward to a really good conversation on how those monies are going to be allocated and what we're going to do with those. So, we have a lot of wonderful opportunities and decisions going forward on this. Regarding the courthouse, Gary, I don't know about any secret courthouse meetings that are happening. Do you?
Several years ago, just before I became administrator, there was a smaller team that was working on the courthouse that included two county commissioners, Chair Bernard and Commissioner Fisher. And then they would go back and brief their colleagues. But perhaps that's, Commissioner Savis may be referring to that. It was not a full board discussion. There were a smaller subset of commissioners.
Well, it sounded like that was happening currently with this board. I am not a part of, don't interrupt me. I am not a part of that. I don't know if that is going on. Gary Barth is our project manager. He's been very forthcoming. Anybody that wants to meet with Gary to get a courthouse briefing, he is always available. In fact, we have commissioner meetings set up with him to discuss this before we discuss this publicly in two weeks from now regarding a seventeen-cent property tax increase. Look, I'm all over this county. I talked to a lot of people. I've never heard anything come out from me on that, and I'm a bit disappointed in Commissioner Savis even bringing that up to somehow try to muddy the waters on an important decision that we need to make. Now, this board will go forward. We've made several decisions on the courthouse. We do understand there's escalating costs. Gary and Nancy Bush will come forward with budget considerations. I know on how this is possible. If the commission wants to vote for it, vote for it. If you don't want to vote for it, then don't for it. Don't vote for it. Nobody is pressuring anybody to do this. There are opportunities. Opportunities come and opportunities go. But we will be having very open, public discussion on this. There is no secret meetings, and I don't know of any tax coming forward on this. With that in mind, this meeting is adjourned.